Rod, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm ready. I just was emailing.
Hey, Leah.
Yep. There's still a million messages.
Little after seven, I'll call our July 17 meeting. Rule call. Joel.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Here.
Carly.
Here.
Adam.
Here.
I'm here.
Dr. Slernow.
Yes.
Heads are meeting and prepping the dust.
Sure, yes.
Please join me in the third meeting.
I would like to please see this document. The United States of America and the liberal public for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does someone like to make a statement? Please.
I will. Montmore Barry School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Jim. Two, the agenda of the minutes. Does someone like to approve our presented and revised agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor of approving our presented and revised agenda, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Two B, approval of our July 3, 2023 Board Regular Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Jim and second by Carly to approve our July 3, 2023 Board Regular Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number three, addressing the board. School news. Ethan, I'll ask you, but if you don't have any, that's all right at summer.
I don't have any right now.
Dr. Slernow. Grateful that you're here again.
Yes.
And thank you so much. And two, just quick announcements. First, today is the first day of round two of summer school. And it seems by all accounts, things really got off to a great start. So that's a testament to all of the staff who've been so kindly giving of their time and talents and support of our kids here. And then secondly, today was the first day of our audit. And this is something that's done annually, and it provides me an opportunity to invite those listening in on the meeting. Then on August the 14th at 6:00 PM at the Intermediate Center, we will be having our annual meeting.
Anyone else have school news to share? I don't imagine any citizens coming in.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Number four, personnel transactions. Dr. Slernow, is there anything that you would like to point out?
Yeah, many, President. Two items, if you don't mind. I am pleased beyond words to be able to recognize and introduce you to our next Human Resources Director. How are you?
Good.
You brought a fan club with you.
I did. I did.
Erin Esslinger. Erin comes to us by way of Barnabell Area School District, where she has served as a Human Resources Director, as well as Elementary Principal for the past year. And prior to that, has been the kindergarten through 12th grade principal in Barnabell. I had called numerous references, and I'm still trying to find someone who'll say something bad about you. But your experience, your desire to get into the thick of it, learn more, I think your service spirit will go a very long way in complementing the work of our senior leadership team and the overall tone established by our Board of Education. So thank you for accepting the call to serve. Would you mind taking a moment or two, just introducing us to these fantastic people?
Of course.
And tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm very excited to serve as the Human Resource Director in Montmore Barry School District. I was able to bring a couple, like you said, my fan club here. This is my husband, Bill. We've been married just short of 19 years. We live out in Arena. We're all up there. This is my daughter, Brinkley. She'll be an eighth grader next year, playing softball, as you can see. She also plays some volleyball, basketball, shoot the trap, Skills USA, lots of things. And I also have a 15-year-old daughter, Braylee. She's out playing volleyball right now, and she enjoys some softball, trap, and Skills USA too. So I am just very excited, very honored to serve in this leadership position, and look forward to learning and growing with the staff and students and community of Montmore. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Welcome. And thank you so much for your support of our dear Erin, who'll happily be a part of our family. I know you too were working for the Barnabell School District, and I love the story, I don't know if I've told this, if I'm repeating myself, about the start to the school year a few years back, and the cleaning that had to get done, and you guys all just pitched in as a family to get it done. I just thought that was just absolutely beautiful.
Lot of extra call versus trip.
The things we do for our parents, right? Yeah. Welcome. Good luck to you as you go into your eighth grade. We're happy for you. If there's anything we can do to be supportive of Erin, let us know.
Thank you.
The other item for board members is to let you know that there's an addendum to the personnel transactions this evening.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Well, I don't want to approve yet, though.
Motion to approve.
I saw that as well. Second. Motion by Leah and second by Carly to approve our personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five, our consent agenda. Only the financial reports. Is there anyone who wants to? Please, we'll look forward to working with you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Motion to approve consent agenda. Second. Motion by Leah, second by Carly to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number six, discussion items. So this has been expanded a tiny bit. It can include our committee and our village liaison positions. So going forward, those of us who serve on village roles, like in the community coalition, and on the parks and rec, Joel is our village liaison. This is where we will report out on those as well. Dr. Slernow and I were, we presented at the Chamber of Commerce Good Morning Montmore, and it was expressed by Rachel and also Ryan, that we just really try to make sure that we're keeping all of our entities well informed. So we decided it would be a really easy way to make sure that it is on the agenda. But otherwise, Carly, do you want to start us off with our?
Sure. Yeah, so Community Legislative Committee met June 26, so just before the governor signed the budget. So we talked a bit about what was in the budget proposal, and then he signed it and turned some things upside down. A lot stayed the same, but there were curveballs in there. So that budget was signed July 5. It did include substantial funding increase to voucher in the Pema Char schools, allocated $30 million for school-based mental health, no longer on a grant basis, though, $50 million for early literacy program, increased the low revenue ceiling from $10,000 to $11,000, and increased special education reimbursement up to about 33%, but in some certain manner, not some sufficient. So if they don't have enough money to get everybody to 33, then we won't get to 33. They just allocate a certain dollar amount. And then the curveball is an increase in the revenue limit by $325 every year for 400 years. So that's great if it holds up. It certainly get challenged, and you know, it's uncertain what that challenge will be. But it did seem at some point, there was uncertain if there was going to be any increase in general aid, but they did pass an increase, a small increase of general aid, and that should help theoretically, should help offset some of the property tax increase associated with that. The literacy bill we talked about, so there's a literacy bill that has gone through the Assembly and through the Senate. I do not think the governor has signed it yet. He has only just gotten to his desk recently. It's intended to target dropping literacy scores statewide, modeled on states in the deep south who've made significant movement in recent years. And it requires that we move our curriculum away from balanced literacy to the science of reading. It's really all the exact same stuff that we're already doing, that Sarah and the team presented a couple meetings ago. So just good to know that we're already headed in the right direction. There will be some requirements to make sure that we have policies on promotion from third to fourth grade in that bill around literacy, and some steps for remediation to require if students aren't at grade level. And I think that's about it. I think we started to talk a little bit about just how we start to think about communicating the budget changes publicly, or talking about the impact. It's, you know, the headlines are $1 billion to public schools, which is a big number. And the reality is that, you know, what that actually means for us is certainly not the billion dollars. So we'd be, I think, wise to figure out how we make sure that the community is aware of how we're spending their tax dollars and the referendum money, and how we're managing that.
Thank you, Carly. Does anyone have any questions for Carly?
I have one related question that you, maybe Dr. Slernow, maybe Scott can answer. There's been talk that, you know, that the legislator may take legal action as a result of the budget. If that happens, will the money get tied up? Like, will we then, like, I'm just like, I don't know if anyone has any ideas, if it's just speculation, but when I heard that, I was like, oh, no. Like, do we, does everything get put on hold then?
Great question. In fact, that was a question raised at the WSB teleconference that was a part of a couple Friday afternoons ago. And there's agreement that in the next budget biennium, the 325 would be in '23, '24, and '24, '25. The argument would be anything.
Going forward. Thank you for that. I was wondering about that.
Good question.
Anybody else? Okay.
And I think the answer to the question is no. I mean, otherwise it would happen every, at the end of every budget.
That's true.
I don't think it would hold up, disperse them. It's a guess.
So Dr. Slernow and I's presentation at the chamber is the next Committee Village Liaison Member Report. And so as you all know, we presented, it was July 5. There was actually a decent amount of people there. I was a little worried that the morning after 4th of July, it might just be the two of us. Adam and Carly were there, which was nice. And we, as Dr. Slernow alluded to in one of the weekly updates, we spent most of the time trying to just gather feedback. We gave them a little presentation, but mostly trying to ask them, you know, what skills, what dispositions, you know, what do they need from our students when they're looking to hire young staff? It was interesting because financial literacy came up a lot, and we have a financial literacy class. So that was another piece that, you know, as we talk about a lot of stuff, school C and D mental health, we're doing a lot, but the community doesn't necessarily know what we're doing. So how do we communicate that? Other things that they brought up were job expectations, you know, employees' ability to communicate both verbally and written, critical thinking, decision-making skills. And then what I thought was really interesting was several people brought up contributions to the word "culture." And I just know from my own children, like, they go to a job and they bring it all home, but they, and they say, oh, it's this way or that way, but like, to actually be like, well, you could be a part of that, and you could try to like, change the culture, or like, contribute to it in a positive way. I thought that was really interesting. So it was a good presentation, I thought. Do you have anything to add?
No, I thought you did really niche job.
So did you.
I think that the data, I think I sent that on to you a couple of weeks ago, and I think it'll help us a great deal as we start to prepare the next strategic meeting.
All righty. Six B, Information and Advocacy Report. Implementing cutting-edge and innovative learning practices. Sarah.
Thank you. So we have two indicators focusing on technology instruction, and then some research-based innovative curriculum instructional practices that we have occurring within our school district. The act report is divided then into those two areas. Technology, just providing more so, more minuscule in this report, just highlighting our technology replacement plan, especially those for the general public to see how we're using our referendum dollars. Where we said we'd be going towards technology, we're now able, due to the successful referendum, able to have a sustainable, successful implementation replacement plan. So for the board, I know this has probably been in your weekly update in the past, but again, just highlighting that we do have a replacement cycle. It's a five-year cycle, computers, displays, and also moving in Service Pros that teachers can also cast to their displays, as well as if we do get into inclement weather, every staff member will have a device that they for sure can use from their home. Whereas we're not piecemeal things together as much anymore, we're really trying to get ahead of technology and do it the right way for our staff and for our students.
Are there any ropes involved here? I'm kidding.
Like, do the.
When we have a lazy presentation, then there are all the ropes.
He would like. I got you. Well, that was, okay, so Rod likes three points. That was my first point. Any other questions? Okay, great.
I do, sorry, I do have a quick question. What do we do with the used computers when we're done with them?
Yeah. Are we talking about desktops or Chromebooks or both?
All of them.
Sure. Depending on the wear and tear, they could be used as a backup. They could be parted. Let's say we need something for this to get this building over a hump. So for example, this school year, or this summer, we have high school being replaced. I think the next school year is the middle school going forward.
That's right.
Maybe we need to piecemeal, sorry, the elementary, maybe we need to piecemeal some other buildings in order to get them to that new cycle. So using those pieces, we do technology recycling drives and those kinds of pieces. Sometimes we're able to sell some back to technology recyclers. So those are the main ways that we use them. But they are pieced out and used a lot. Broken screens, a lot. Warm keys, those kinds of things.
Cool.
Yeah. Our goal is to, and Dr. Slernow has reiterated this many times to our team, to really, to stick to the cycle and to, when we say we're having a new one in a building, we are finding a new one in a building, and we're doing it right. We're not going to hodgepodge. I think that's a term.
Yep.
Yep.
I just wondered if we could offer them at a super low rate to families?
It could be a possibility if we don't need them.
Or to teachers, or, you know, if they need something.
If we feel they have surplus. Yeah, you haven't felt that way yet. It's not a feeling you've had yet?
I'm worried for nothing.
So this time next year, you can see if we're there yet. Okay. So that was technology. The next piece is looking at just some innovative curriculum instructional practices, where we're trying to move forward to. In the past, previous reports, the past couple of years, we've been talking about our co-teaching efforts and talking through that, and that's been looking like. We decided to stay away from that this year. And really talk about our instructional coaches. We had the pleasure at our education committee meetings now back in September, and then this past May, where our three coaches visited with our team. Unfortunately, we never brought, maybe we should bring our coaches to the board, to the full board, because they did a really nice job explaining the role and what they do, what they don't do. So I tried to summarize that in a very short nutshell of what they do. Instructional coaches, they're not evaluative, they're not punitive, they don't seek to fix teachers. They work to collaborate, support, help teachers grow. And that's where we want our students to go, and we want our teachers to go. So we have a full instructional coach, Stacy Meister. She used to be a middle school teacher. She works with teachers in grades six through 12. And then we have Julie Jones and Amanda Seija, who are math interventionists part-time, but they're also our math coaches as well. So they work with their staff. Julie works with K through 2, and Amanda works with 3 through 5. Within this report, I try to offer ways to show, or I try to offer quotes from staff. This report's a little unique because I actually copy and pasted what I see happening between our coaches and our teachers. So I went back and looked at my observations, just so you could get a sense of the conversations that the instructional coaches are having, and how deep and focused on action and data they are. And making sure the teacher feels that they're getting their needs met to grow and act on their work. So for example, example one, the coaches being the mirror for the teacher. So tell me what you see. Tell me how this is moving. What are your thoughts? So then the teacher can reflect and share their ahas, share maybe their failures, and share where they want to go next. Example two, I really like this example because the coach was listening, but then ever so gently nudging to, okay, so how can we use data? How can I collect data for you? How can we look at engagement, and so on and so forth? So again, our coaches have a nice balance of listening, support, but also the active pushing, looking at data. Speaking of data, my third point, one of my three main points that I like, is looking at the data piece of how many connections have these staff members made with staff? Between Julie and Amanda, they've supported 83 peer-to-peer observations. So having staff members go in and visit their teachers' classroom to pull something and learn something from them. Stacy Meister has worked with 42 different teachers in grades 6 through 12. And that could be a full coaching cycle, a full 46 weeks. Some people she's worked the whole year with. It could be maybe a couple touchpoints with them. But for the first year, for our instructional coach, a new position in the school district, having 42 different people that they've done coaching cycle work with or touchpoints, and staff members feeling confident and comfortable to work with her, that's an amazing, reasonably huge success. So our coaches have been putting the time in, putting the work in, and it's been paying off, and staff, at least the first year, having the buy-in and the confidence to receive that support. So we look forward to next year. We look forward to increasing all of these numbers, and probably bring them in to talk to the full board at some point if that works.
So how is it determined how long you will a teacher is coached? You know, you mentioned four to six weeks, or sometimes the full year. How is that determined?
Yeah. A typical coaching cycle is four to six weeks.
Okay.
After that cycle is completed, the teacher can decide if they'd like to continue on that specific focus area, or if they want to have a new focus area. Stacy really lets them take the lead in that piece of it. Like I said, maybe about more of an intense four to six weeks, and then she'll do check-ins every month. It really, she really tailors it to what the teacher's needs are. I don't know, she keeps it all straight, but she does.
So what are the requirements for improving coaching skills, some of that kind of stuff? Like, teachers have their continuing education credits, things like that.
Yeah.
Is this a program with all of that as well?
How do we support the coaches? That's your question? Yeah. Our coaches, over the past summer, last summer, went through the gym night training, which was, testing my memory now, I believe it was 12 weeks of either weekly or a couple times a week, training for like, three hours online. Very, very intense. Amanda and Stacy did that, and Julie did the shorter version, as she was on maternity leave for part of it. And then they have been, actually, in June and then throughout the year, they've been doing some smaller, like, one-day or half-day trainings as well to improve their craft. They keep asking for more and more trainings, but I put the brakes on a little bit because I want them to take what they first learned and do that really well, before they keep building on and on and on. With that gym night training, it was many, many, many hours. They honestly got like, six to eight books to read too. I want to make sure they can get through all those things first. We invested a lot of time, talent, and energy and funds upfront with these three folks to make sure that they felt supported. Also, throughout the year, thank you for asking this, we also work with CISA 2. They had, every month, or every other month, depends on which staff member, we had Steven Galavich from CISA 2 come in and coach them, and watch them do it. So we had the hands-on coaching. And then they had monthly online meetings with Steven as well for like, troubleshooting, how do I do this? And then in year two, which is this coming school year, Steven's coming back, and he's going to be supporting them again. So upfront, a lot. And then throughout the year, making sure they're supported. He models, they watch, or they, the coaches cycle, they give feedback on different ways. I don't know if I put that in, so thank you for asking.
Sarah, how does what the coaches are doing align with like, peer mentoring for, you know, initial educators?
Sure.
And the coaching feedback that the principals are giving?
Yeah. We are careful with meshing together the feedback and evaluating principal feedback with that piece of it, right? Because they coach support, and principals are more evaluative sometimes. First part, your question.
Would like, all initial educators have to have mentoring?
Yeah.
If these folks only focus up beyond their first three years, or?
They could, they could support students or teachers within their first three years, those provisionally licensed teachers. However, those teachers have their own mentors who have gone through teacher projects, mentor trainings. But that doesn't mean we haven't had Stacy work with a new teacher as well, or Julie, I believe, would model a lesson for a new teacher. They're all teachers in that way. But those teachers do have their own dedicated mentors as well.
Sarah, we've heard great things about this.
That's good.
Especially from.
That's what we aim to.
Yeah, right away last year, I know Cody and Lisa both said that Stacy was just making an amazing difference for educators.
Yeah, like, we, I don't, we hit the jackpot.
Yeah.
Like, we hit it. I hear horror stories about instructional coaches in the district sometimes, especially in their first year, teachers seeing that that person coming in is like, a punishment, or like, we don't want them here, like. Oh, she had 42 people wind up this year. She was busy.
Impressive.
Yeah.
And obviously, this is going to pay off, I mean, for student outcomes, there's probably not a great way to quantify that.
Not right now.
Is that right?
I mean, she's one person spread amongst 80 hundred staff members, so I don't have to quantify anything right now. I figured that'd be a question from Mr. Gray.
It's there.
Okay.
He asked it the one time. I didn't have to.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we could pull research and data about instructional coaching, but it's a little early to quantify that with her work spread out the way it is.
I mean, and are there some other outcomes that this produces? I can imagine that, you know, job satisfaction for teachers, and just feeling like they're more effective, anything else that you can track, even if it's just anecdotally?
I, you know, we have our wellness survey in November and December. Be interested to see, now that Stacy's had a full year, if there's any comments on that, in that portion of it. If I doubt, you know, I know we like to keep the questions on that wellness survey the same every year. So I don't think we probably have a question on that specifically, but it may come up anecdotally, or those more open response questions.
So what's the ideal on something like that? So our industry talks about coaching all the time.
Yeah.
Many industries do. So what's, what do we see as a future on something like this? Because it's tremendously valuable.
Yeah. Yeah. So currently, right now, we have math coaches, math interventions coaches, between Julie and Amanda. I've actually hired Erin Stone, who was here presenting to you all.
Right.
Right? Yeah. That's right, you had a good exchange with Erin.
Yeah, it was great.
About the rope. Yeah. We hired her with the mindset of coach as well. So as we fine-tune our K2 literacy, and look hopefully to bring our intervention numbers down, Erin would have more capacity to do more coaching, as well as intervention. So that is our initial look at that. At the secondary level, we'll just see how Stacy's workload is going there. I know where FTE is at, where state controls are at that level, so I'll have to play by you there. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Leah.
Thank you.
And thank you, Sarah, for setting the conditions so that these people could be successful.
Yeah.
Of course, they have cachet unto themselves.
They rock it.
But the fact that you set the conditions for them through training just speaks to who you are as a developer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just, I don't know, you're up next, the annual meeting agenda.
Yeah, hey, word has it, we have an annual meeting coming up on August the 14th at 6:00 PM over at the Intermediate Center. And as is typically the case, our meeting has a pretty finite kind of agenda, so to speak, but there is some room in the event that a board member wishes to have some consideration to something new within that. We can always run it past our legal attorney. As a friendly reminder, this is not actually a Board of Education meeting. This is a meeting of the community, the community of the whole. And so we'll look for the community to take action on three items. The resolutions you see there in seven, eight, and then number 11 respectively. And we'll actually have formal votes and the like. So I just wanted to just check in, make certain that there's any questions or concerns about the process we're using, ideas. You may have seen, I did put the script, proposed script for that in the administrative content of board docs as well. Of course, we get to hear from our treasurer, too. How could I forget? Treasurer Myers.
We're really looking forward to it.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
That's the talent portion.
When the spotlight comes down on the disco ball, yeah.
Jim, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, thank you. I just wanted to create some exposure for you and certainly if there's anything else that I can be of service with as we prepare for that. Of course, we also know Scott and his team are working to prepare everything once we're post-audit to have our finance committee meeting take place on July the 25th. Thank you.
All right, 7A, first reading of a new policy, 453.7, management of concussion in school setting.
Yeah, so one of the recommendations from WSB is that we have pretty specific procedures around when students get a concussion here at school. And so we did not even have a policy for it. And so we thought we would just develop a policy before we can go into procedures on how we will handle it, work through it. We have a draft that CJ Goodwin put together. I've already talked to Colleen, so then we'll bring in Colleen, we'll bring in our athletic trainer, we'll bring in a whole group to kind of go through those and make sure that we're all on the same page. But kind of just started out with this brand-new policy.
Motion to approve. One second. Motion by Leah, second by Carly, to approve the first reading of our new policy for 453.7, management of concussion in school setting. Is there any other discussion?
A quick call out, we did change the name of it to head injuries because it talks about head injuries, so we can't call it concussions because it's about head injuries. So we didn't change it on here, but it has changed up there.
Your pardon.
It's right on the board.
It's right, it's up there.
All those favor of the management of head injuries in school setting. Oh, yeah, I think that's a roll call. Joel?
Yes, I.
Rod?
Hi.
Leah? Yes. Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I also a yes?
Okay. Thank you.
The next two are ones that Carly, Leah, Jim, and I worked on. Based on you all's feedback for policy 150, the board governance roles and responsibilities, and then also our school board liaison positions. Do you mind? It looks like more than probably there really is. Because honestly, what we did was, we categorized them, so we kind of lumped them together, or, you know, broke them apart, actually. So that it was a little bit more clear in terms of responsibilities and then the norms. We also included things that we had talked about in our, in our workshop, things like confidentiality. We also just tried to clean up some of the language because some of it was a bit lengthy where it didn't need to be. Some of it was not really very applicable. We also tried to make sure that it was really clear, sort of that chain of command that, you know, I think it says in the first paragraph or the introduction part, but there that says, you know, the superintendent is the only employee that reports directly to the Board of Education and is also the primary spokesperson for the district. And then maybe scroll down a little further to the end part. Yeah, and then we talked about the meeting norms, which again came from what everyone shared with Dr. Slurnow. And some of the things that were in the old policy were technically known, so we removed those down. And then one thing that was not specifically in this policy was addressing breaches of board responsibilities. We have not had an issue of that since I've been on the board, but Leah has had experience with that. Dr. Slurnow reached out to the attorney to make sure that this was appropriate and illegal in terms of just having it written out in case there was ever an issue. Jim, Leah, Carly, am I missing anything? Was there anything that you all would point out?
We do really good work at 7AM. Okay, we met really early in the morning. So then we can fit it in.
No, I think that was the good summary. Are there any questions or comments?
Not that that's, I mean, I, were you, were you looking at addressing breaches of board responsibilities? Obviously, the more detailed we are in that, the more precise we need to be in our record-keeping, is all it is. Because that, when you lay a process out like this, it opens you up to legal amplifications. If for some reason that is short-circuited or anything. So that would be my only concern, is how specific that is. And should that be, and I don't, I mean, obviously, it sounds like an attorney is better than, but yeah, that would be the only comment I would have.
I would say that, I might think that's a really good point. I mean, that number one, gather all pertinent factual information, sort of does, you know, it doesn't specifically say, like, make sure everything's documented, but it conveys that to me. Do you think that it should be written?
I'm not sure. As I was reading it, I was thinking about what would, what would come out of that? Because if we think about situations that come up, this would be, okay, there's an issue, and then the public decides that this is, this is a problem. The first thing they're going to look at is an open records request on this. That's the very first thing. What did the board do to address the issue? So either we need to be really specific or intentionally very vague. But we can't, we can't come somewhere in between on that because I think we open ourselves up to a lot of questions.
It's been my experience where there's a, where there's a lot of latitude and interpretation as to what could be done actually creates more of frustration for the community in such matters or for the people who are subject to the concern. And so this provides, I think, enough guidance, but isn't it too, too prescriptive that doesn't allow for board members to pivot if they need to with the help of their attorney? Sometimes having this level of detail is very helpful in addressing an issue because then it's out of that person's hands. It's what's.
Sorry, they have a prescriptive role as well.
I had a, I had a question about G in the, in the top section there about notifying, communicate whenever asked to meet in an official capacity. How broad is that interpreted? How broad is that interpreted? Is that a parent contacting you? Is that a staff member? Is that a community member? Because that seems pretty limiting in terms of being able to have just conversations with folks in the community. And so I wasn't sure about the intent of that, if maybe there's a way to define that a little more narrowly? That, you know, if it's, I can see where there's cases where you'd want that, and it's a courtesy, and I could see where, as a citizen of this town, that'd be my right to have an off-the-record or whatever conversation with folks, especially if you're already friends or whatnot.
I totally read that one, and I don't know about the rest of you that were on the committee, like, when Dr. Slurnow and I were asked to present at the chamber event. Like, I, like, official capacity to me meant like an event. I don't, I honestly didn't even think of it as like a, what?
It's a fucking incentive.
Yeah, like someone at the grocery store said, like, oh, tell me about the cellphone thing, you know? And I was like, oh, here's what I know, you know?
Right.
I don't know, is it?
I'm with you.
Okay.
You know, we would never want to do anything that impedes a board member's ability to have a candid conversation with somebody. And if it needs to be off the record, it's off the record. I don't have need to know about it unless you believe there's something that would be helpful for us to know and should under those surprises, but that's what that means.
Okay.
But I think a little bit of a caveat, if you were going to say meet with 10 teachers because they have a concern, that would be then official capacity kind of gray area.
Right. That's, that's where I'm kind of getting at in this, and I'm not, so I think there is, obviously, you'll know when you see it in some respects, but it was just kind of uncertain.
Let's play out that scenario of following the chain of command. We would say to those 10 folks in this scenario, what happened when you spoke with whomever is the principal first? And if they said, we did, well, then what happened when you spoke with the next director? You just follow the chain of commands? Because you don't want to find yourself in a situation where you're having to write. And so we want to do everything we can to be supportive of you. And of course, if they've come through my office and they're still not happy, why then? We have an formal process in place here in our district about complaints about personnel.
Anybody else? Comments, questions? I would make a motion to approve. Motion by Leah, second by Carly.
I have a substitute amendment. Takes precedence over the main, main motion. As I said two or three times in the past, I can't, I can't support this. We're all adults. We're all elected officials. Even if we have good intuition, we understand what our responsibilities are as, as elected officials. And so, you know, I wonder what problem we're trying to solve. We don't, we haven't had a rash of people doing any of this. And so I wonder what, in heaven's name, are we doing, are we doing, passing this, this policy? And I think that's compounded by the fact, when you take a look at the sanctioning language, I mean, that process in and of itself is punitive. It's intimidating. The last line, the last line of a school board policy says essentially, you may want to think about getting a lawyer. I can't, I can't believe that. Are you kidding me? For what's in that policy? Our best advice is you may, you may want to go get a lawyer? I just, I can't, I can't believe that. You know, listen, I'm, I'm 100% okay with sanctions, but you don't do it this way. You don't intimidate your colleagues by saying if you misstep, you may need a lawyer. That's not the way we do business here. That's, it's just not the way we do. So that's, I can't, that's a, I mean, all of this is, all of this is compounding. You know, let me, let me give you an example. So, and God bless Jessica, she and I get along great. But why is the board president running the investigation? Why, why is, why is that happening? Why is a person that may or may not like me personally or politically, why is that person running the investigation? Why is that person in charge of sanctioning me? This sanctioning language is, is, as I said, is punitive, punitive of itself. But let's take, let's take, let's make it a specific example. Board norm number C. One of my favorite norms in the very short time that I've been on the board. The board, the board supports an inquiry stance. I don't know what that is. Practicing active listening and being prepared, okay? This includes suspending preconceived ideas. Guess what? When I came to this meeting tonight, I, I had not suspended preconceived ideas about this agenda item because I think it's wrong. It's not the right way for us to go. I didn't need an open mind about it. I spent the weekend studying it and thinking about it and coming up with an alternative. I don't need, I don't need to have my preconceptions taken away because they have been by the policy on its face. But there's more. If someone somehow could get into my head and know what I was thinking... See, I've always, the problem that I've always had is this kind of stuff dictates behavior, right? But now, now we're dictating how we think. And we have, and then we go, just two paragraphs later, we get into this lengthy, this lengthy section about sanctions. The last sentence of which is, hey, because you didn't suspend your preconceived notices, notions, you may need a lawyer. That's what this means. That's what this does. And again, it's not the way we do business here. It's not. Our emphasis should be on collegiality, not on adopting policies that tell us we may need a, there's going to be an investigator involved, and we may need a lawyer. That's just, I can't. I'm speechless. It's like two meetings in a row. I'm speechless. I don't, I don't know what to say. And I'm sure you guys, when I get done, you'll tell me where I'm wrong. And that's okay. I accept that because that's the way it should be. That's the way it should be. But we shouldn't be investigating our colleagues and hiring lawyers. We should be handling this collegially. Because guess what? Each one of us is a good person. And each one of us, I know this from being with you, each one of us has the right intentions. We may disagree with one another violently, and that's okay. But if we, if we think the wrong thing, or if we act the wrong way, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be subject to sanctions. That's, that's craziness. That's absolute craziness. Dr. Slurnow, do you have, I, so I spent some time, I was out this weekend visiting my wonderful parents. And I was thinking, but I wrote, I wrote the substitute amendment. I wrote this substitute amendment. I don't know if you can bring it up, Dr. Slurnow?
Sure. Okay, great.
This afternoon. And what it tries to do is, 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 is take, take, take out of this equation this sort of wasteful, duplicative dictation of both behavior and thought, and get back to, get back to brass tacks. So you can read the preamble if you want. That, that's terrific. We do, we, we mentioned, of course, what the, what the board's major role is. We outlined what our first commitment is to. But we also have to always keep in mind that the voters of the district ultimately have the responsibility of judging whether or not we belong here. That's, we've always got to remember that. We're policymakers. Talk, talk as we did earlier about the superintendent and board members being able to participate in the evaluation processes. But let's, let's get down to it. The policy, if we have any policy as a board, it should be based on the code of ethics, our oath of office, and the responsibilities of a school board and school board members as outlined in state statute. So I'm sure you're familiar with the code of ethics. If you're not, you should go home and read it tonight. I think the oath of office, actually, the standard that it gives us is the most interesting. Because these old oaths go back actually to colonial time. I learned this over the weekend. And, and they do set a standard. And the most interesting standard is faithfully, faithfully discharge or faithfully execute. And that faithful execution, that faithful execution creates a standard for board members that includes things like not going beyond the scope of their office, number one. Number two, not misusing district funds, and fulfilling their board responsibilities with diligence, confidence, carefulness, honesty, integrity, and good faith. That's what that means. That's what that means. That's a really cool thing when you think about it. And each of us are sworn to that standard. So, so this is, this should be the guts of it. The code of ethics, our oath of office, and the responsibilities of the school board. And when we get to sanctions, we should, we should, the premium, when it comes to sanctions, should be on collegiality. We take seriously our. Uh, we take seriously our commitment to, to each of those three things, but we're, we take equally as seriously collegiality and the collegial enforcement of each of those standards, although enforcement of the code of ethics, of course, is not, not ours really to do. And the board recognizes that on the rarest occasions, a member may run afoul of one or more of these standards. We get that, we're all human. And then there's a, then there's a collegial way, there's a collegial approach, uh, to, to dealing with these, dealing with these potential problems. So I, I will move the adoption of the substitute amendment, and, uh, again, we, we have, we, I think the biggest problem with the policy that, 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 that was put together is that is, is the stitching of the pieces together just does, isn't right, it's not right. The stitching of, of responsibilities and norms together with a punitive, intimidating sanction process is, is not appropriate, and it's not what, not how I think we, we should do business, it's not how we have done business as long as I've been on the, on the board. And I appreciate your indulgence, I appreciate your time, I feel passionate about this, and, and I would, I would move the adoption of the substitute amendment.
I will ask Dr. Slerner to first you. I don't know what the appropriate, um, Robert's rules of order for this is, but I would recommend that we table both to not only value your time and passion, but also the time and effort of others and Dr. Slerner on the previous, um, policy, so we can read both and discuss it at a later time, because I just am seeing this now, and I would look more time with it. So do we need to make a motion to table, or how do we know about it?
We actually have a motion on the floor right now.
We have two right now.
Yes, we have two motions on the floor, um, and so Mr. Heiss has provided a motion to have this substitute, this document for consideration of the document that was on the agenda this evening. We would need to, my understanding is need to determine whether or not there's a second to Mr. Heiss's approach to do that, and then it does not, if it does receive a second, open it up to debate on that, and then take a vote on that to determine whether or not it gets tabled.
The other option is he can withdraw his motion, and I can withdraw my motion, and then we can table it. That is the other option.
That is another option, correct. So right now, because there is a motion on the, on the, on the floor, we would look to see Madam President if there could be a second to that.
So either way, I agree with the outcome of getting this thing so that we can, we can go back and look at it. So if that requires a second to rods, I would second that, but if these two will withdraw it, then I will, that I, obviously, because I, this needs more discussion. No doubt about it.
Well, I don't think a guy cannot withdraw his motion after talking about collegiality for the last 15 minutes.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Rod.
I would love to see Adam's face if I tried to do that. He's like, what? I, I, Madam President, I withdraw my motion.
I also withdraw my motion.
And so we would need Carly Fisher to do likewise.
I will draw a second. And now would someone like to make a motion to table this agenda?
I move to table a substitute.
I would second that.
Motion by Jim, second by Joel to table our first reading of policy 150.
Madam President, may I ask if, um, Jim and who was the second on it?
Joel.
Joel, if they'd also be willing to request a motion to table policy 182 as well?
I make a motion to table policy 182.
I'll second that. 150 and 182. Thank you, I'm so sorry.
Nope, that's okay, okay. Uh, motion by Jim, second by Joel to table policy 150 and 182 to our next meeting. Is there any further discussion or questions?
Um, I would suggest that we, that we, that we leave the timing on when this be reconsidered a little bit looser, I mean.
Oh.
Uh, maybe we can get it done in two weeks, maybe we can't, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I'd leave it loose.
To a future meeting.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Number eight, citizens comments. Guessing we still don't have any?
This is us.
All right. Number nine, future agenda items, if there's anything that you would like to add, if you think that Dr. Slerner and myself know.
We have sevens.
But we just, we, we moved both of those.
Both, okay. Okay, thank you, that was 182.
And number 10, schedule of next meeting, Dr. Slerner, is there anything to point out?
Uh, just the note about the finance committee meeting again, instead of Monday night, it'll be Tuesday, May the 25th at 4:30 PM online.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?